Reverend Michael Brown, he's with Muson Secretarian Church to give us our education.
Oh Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. We seek your wisdom tonight, the wisdom by which you lay the foundations of the earth, the wisdom by which kings reign and rulers make just laws. We seek your guidance, the guidance of the good shepherd who knows our inmost being and leads his people in paths of righteousness for his name's sake. And we seek your glory, the glory that is revealed in all of creation and the glory that is fully revealed in Christ Jesus, who is Lord and king of kings. Oh Lord, reigning over us tonight, pour your steer upon us and may we glorify you in all that we do and say it. And I pray in Jesus' precious and holy name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next order of business is approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting that was held Monday, October 7th, 2019, as a public hearing and regular council meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, October 17th. Question, properly second, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, the same. We're gonna just go out of order slightly with our, um, our agenda, because we're trying to get some people out of here as soon as possible. So if you would skip down to, um, the, uh, resolution number 2019-17, we have Attorney McNice here to do a brief presentation. Sir, if you will.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Well, good evening, everyone, good evening, members of county council. Um, it's a pleasure to be here before you all. Um, there's some information that I need to update county council uh, with, with regard to the opioid litigation that you all retain, the legal group that I'm involved with, uh, there's some developments that you need to understand because there's some decisions that you need to make. Um, I know this, I'm pretty certain that you all have been following in the news and there's been various settlements and talks of settlements with various states. Um, we've reached a crucial point in this lit- litigation because there's so many talks involved and it's ver- they're very tedious, well, wirely tedious, because we've got the major manufacturer of OxyContin, who's the major defendant in this action, Purdue Pharmaceuticals. Um, they've been, they've been in some, they have been in some regular settlement talks with us and the other parties, and they have been threatening to file bankruptcy. Why is that significant? If Purdue Pharma files bankruptcy, that pretty much ruins the claim, it goes to pennies on the dollar. So that's part of their bargaining strategy to say, hey, if you don't, if you make your number too high, we're gonna run. Purdue doesn't want to file bankruptcy because that, that family, that corporation is a tightly held family corporation and they would be pretty much personas non grata around the world. Uh, they like their family, they don't want to be regarded as being bad people, so I doubt that's gonna happen. So, what we have now is because we've engaged in these settlement talks and things have become more concrete, they're not solid, but there are two options for county council. Um, we can continue, when I say county council, I mean for Williamsburg County. You can continue pretty much outside of the class, because now there's a class and it's head is primarily out of Ohio. And that pretty much means us and some other people that decide to go in the class, go outside of the class, would pretty much have to represent ourselves. Whereas if we opt into the class, we be, we get in with all the other municipalities, counties, possibly even some states from around the country, and we follow that where it goes, and with that settlement, we'll, we'd be a part of that. The question is, well, which one's better? In my opinion, it's more cost effective for you to opt in to the class. Less work for you to do, it's pretty much just sitting back and waiting on the settlement. Now, I know what the big question in the room is, how much is it? Uh, to answer that question, and this is what I, and, and as a lawyer talking about settlements, and I'm sure Mr. Jacobson would agree when we're talking to clients, they like numbers, the answers I'm gonna give you is, I don't know. But, tonight, I can tell you what Williamsburg County can expect to receive if we settle and give it a particular amount. What's been created, and what you're looking at on this board is what we call the natural opioid, the natural prescription opiates litigation, it's called a widget. And this is a program that's been created by the lawyers that will tell us what a county can expect to receive per billion dollars in the cell. So, if there's ten billion dollars, whatever this number is, we multiply that times ten, and that would give us the number that we could expect. So, based upon this, we are in, excuse me, South Carolina. I would show it to you, but I can't right now. But, what I can tell you, because I've looked at the number, per billion dollars, Williamsburg County will expect to get fifty-seven thousand dollars. The conservative estimates now, and that's per billion, the conservative estimates for settlement now are forty-eight billion dollars. So if you multiply, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars times forty-eight, that's two point seven three six million dollars that Williamsburg County will get. The forty-eight billion dollar number is the conservative number. There are some that take it in excess of probably, you know, maybe seventy, eighty billion dollars. So, naturally, you would multiply fifty-seven thousand dollars times eighty, and that would give you your numbers. So, the other question you may ask is, what's it gonna cost you now? Nothing, the same thing has been, has cost the county so far, so there's, there are no expenses involved right now. But what I need for the, what we need for the county to do is to enact a resolution that's been prepared for you, opting in to the class. Uh, you have until, um, November twenty-second to do it. Um, we just found out last week, week before last, brought it to the intention of the supervisor, and here we are now. So I'll entertain any questions that you all have. Sorry, that widget broke for some reason. I'm glad it didn't happen. Okay. All right.
Yeah. Resolutions are in motion, yes, sir.
Is that right, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
So good.
All those in favor for approval of resolution number 2019-17 to opt in to the nationwide class certified for negotiation services and regulations in the natural prescription opioids litigation, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, the same.
Thank you, I have a minute.
The next order of business is a presentation, which is an annual presentation by our debt service, um, group, um, Mr. Brian Nure, Mrs. Christina Hyde. So he will present us information, you should have all of that information in the booklet, and as well as he has it up on the wall.
All right, good evening. I'm Brian, members of council, my name is Brian Nure, and, uh, I was here last September giving an update on, uh, your debt management. And we've had some developments since last year that I'd like to go over. Now, I will say that we laid a lot of groundwork last year. Last year I spoke for an hour and fifteen minutes. Sure everyone wants to hear about debt for the next hour and fifteen minutes, so I'm going to focus on the, the more up-to-date pieces of this, this handout, and if there are any other questions that I don't cover tonight that we can cover later on, I'd be happy to do so, via email or, um, in person. So on the cover page, we have six core funding and repayment sources that we identify and track for county. The first is general obligation bonds and equipment leasing that is paid for from debt service millage. So that's one bucket of revenue that we are annuitizing or funding up projects through. The second is fire protection general obligation bonds. There's a separate millage that is levied for bonds that are issued for fire protection services and purchasing various types of equipment. And we have a, a, a separate millage and separate amount of debt for that function. Um, third is referendum approved general obligation bonds, and that is a nexus to the countywide sales tax and various road projects, and that, we'll, we'll get into some updated numbers tonight on, on that program. Uh, the fourth is heavy equipment leasing, where you're, um, borrowing funds through a lease to purchase equipment, and then you're, you're turning that equipment in, uh, say five years and getting some money back for the equipment, but you have payments that are spread out over that five years that we need to budget for. Uh, the fifth is hospital revenue bonds, there's a dedicated, dedicated millage to make payments on bonds for the benefit of the hospital, that was done every year ago. And then last is waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds or combined utilities. So that is six items that we manage each year and, and keep up to date on. I'm gonna primarily focus on items one through four, and then I'm gonna, uh, go to the back of the booklet where we have a couple recommendations. So flipping to page one into page two, we get into the bonds and the leases that have been issued and are set up to be repaid from debt service millage. So on this page, we identify in our column A, the bond series, B, the purpose, the bond rating applicable to the debt that's outstanding, the original par amount, the amount outstanding, the average interest rate, the final maturity, and then any call provisions or any items that can be, um, refinanced if there's going to be a cost savings. So you will see that the first item, the two thousand and ten IPRB, BAV stands for Series Two Thousand and Ten installment purchase revenue bond, and it was part of the American Recovery Reinvestment Act, which provides us a lower interest rate, uh, through the Build America Bond Program. And that financing built this building we're in today. And that was, it was, uh, very well received by the market, had an average interest rate of four point one one eight percent, but as you can see, beginning next year, December twenty twenty, we can actually pay that bond off and refinance it to the extent interest rates are lower. Today, interest rates are lower. What they will be next year, we don't know, but given the way things are, are moving in terms of interest rates, things look like they'll still be favorable. So we're monitoring that and we'll give you an update. Uh, the rest of the, the bonds that are outstanding speak for themselves, and the last bond issued, the two thousand and nineteen, you'll see there are two asterisks by that. Uh, and if you go down below, it said that the financing included certain equipment with a repurchase option as such, the debt issuance is prepayable at any time. So, in this year, we issued about one point nine million dollars, and of that amount, just over a million dollars was for solid waste heavy equipment. And the reason that we financed it this way was, number one, the repayment source would be from debt service millage. And I reported to council last year that we had a little bit of room within that, that bucket, that revenue stream to finance the project, so very fortunate that we're able to finance those projects. But, at any point in time, when we maybe sell that equipment back and turn it in and receive funds, we will be able to pay the balance of that loan down immediately. So that was part of the structure of that financing, and it's a little bit different than how we would normally issue a general obligation bond. So we did that to complement what you were, what you were borrowing. So if we move to page three, this is a, an estimate of what we could expect if we were to refinance that Build America bond today at today's interest rates. So we identify the fiscal year, we identify under the blue columns, the principal, the interest, um, any credits or interest earnings on the debt service reserve fund, and then total amount of your payments. So if business as usual, this works out, we don't refinance, and we just carry on, you can see the total under the blue columns adds up to thirty-eight, I'll round it to thirty-eight point eight million dollars in total debt service payments over the next twenty twenty-one year. However, if we refinance, under the reddish columns, you can see that we'll have a principal amount outstanding, an interest column, a debt service reserve fund, uh, column, we have total payments, and they're reduced, they're reduced to thirty-five point eight million dollars. And so the difference under the green column savings is about two point nine million, or round numbers, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that you would save if we're able to, to, to achieve this. Now, down below, on the far right, just to give a, a broad, a brush, of the bonds that are retaining, that we can refinance early, we show that those are outstanding at an interest rate of four point three six percent. And if we sold new bonds today, we estimate we would be at three point two six percent. So we would reduce the interest rate by about one point one percent, that's a, we call in, in the municipal finance, we'll have a hundred and ten basis points. What it would be the day that we would, would hit the go button on refinancing, that will be what it will be on, on that particular day. And we could start that process, uh, in September of next year, and there would be a little bit of work that would need to be done prior to September to position ourselves for that. Are there any questions on the savings notes? Okay. On page four, this is a graphical representation of all the bonds that are outstanding that are being repaid in leases from debt service millage. And you can see that we have a target of ninety-seven, sorry, twenty-nine point seven mills, and then you can see some green bars that have been added. Those green bars are the two thousand and nineteen general obligation bond that I talked about earlier. Those payments have been layered in strategically, and you will continue to make those payments, until which time you may sell a piece of the equipment back under your contractual agreement with Caterpillar, and, and you may pay down this loan, and we will, uh, we will make adjustments, but that's flexibility that's built in. But we have, we have structured this to keep you right at that twenty-nine point seven mills, and I'll get into the millage calculations here in a second, but that is your structure. And last year, if you just kind of visioned those, those green bars not being there, when I presented the council, I said we have a little bit of room to issue some bonds and take care of some projects, and we essentially have layered in, uh, those payments with this one point nine million dollar borrowing we did earlier this year. Page five is simply all the math behind the graph, a little bit less friendly way to look at it, but, uh, I'll skip page five, and we'll move to page six. So on page six, uh, we work with your finance staff, and we go through your ledgers, and we look at what is the value of a mill each year to try to look for a trend, and we use that trend and then forecast our projection. So, um, updated from last year, under column B, we have inserted fiscal year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen collection. So, under your debt service millage at twenty-nine point seven, column B, the collectible value of a mill, just doing the simple math, is eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And if you compare that to last year, we grew at one point seven percent. The year prior to that, we grew at just slightly less than one percent, point seven. Year before that, one point eight percent, year before that, five point three percent, so forth and so on. So you can start seeing a trend, and the reason that that's important is if we move to page seven, this is where we calculate in each year what our estimated value of a mill will be under column C. So if you go to the gray highlighted row, which is fiscal year twenty twenty, you'll see that eighty-two thousand five fifty-six, right, we carry forward that collectible value of a mill. But then under column D, we have to make some assumption on what our annual growth rate will be. And our annual growth rate that we use is a conservative one percent, which then ties back to our historical work that we do tracking the, the ledger each year for the debt service. Does that make sense to everyone? Anyone have any questions on that?
Just with the, um, the research rate, how do you actually have to know that that would be the cost saving?
For the, the refinancing?
Right.
So we track your credit rating, um, I've got an update on that here a little bit later on, and then based upon your credit ratings, there are various interest rates in the marketplace for that type of debt. And we track other bond issues that we do that are similar to yours, and we also work with the underwriting community to ask them, give us an estimate on what you think that this, uh, this paper, we call it paper, bonds will, will trade for. That's how we go through that process. Now, the other way is through a bank loan, where we would solicit certain banks. The problem there is it's a twenty-year term, and most banks are allergic to twenty-year term loans, they don't want to go out that far, they want to be more in the ten-year space, some will get into the fifteen-year space, but when you get out to twenty-year space, it gets a little bit more, more challenging. So the original loan was done with a bond rating from Standard and Poor's, and it was a public market transaction, and as of today, we would do that again. If we can find a bank that would beat that process of doing a, a twenty-year transaction, we would certainly entertain it, but we really don't know, you know, till roughly, probably eight to nine months from now. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. So on the far column, column I, when we look at the math between our target of twenty-nine point seven mills, and based upon our assumed value of a mill in each particular year, we do the difference. And the difference is what you have remaining to issue bonds for another purpose. And so if you look at twenty twenty, we're right on top of that difference of a hundred and five, a hundred and six thousand dollars. And you scroll down, as you repay that two thousand and nineteen loan and other loans that are outstanding, you open up eventually to the four hundred thousand, um, get into the five hundred thousand mark. So, hopefully this time next year, we have completed that refinancing, we have grown another one percent on the value of a mill from the local economy, and these numbers show an extra a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, and we're talking about another round of projects and identifying needs of the county and seeing if we can afford them uh, within this, this, this framework and this structure. Okay? And then the last page to this section, page eight, is a debt limit. So how much debt we can issue under our eight percent without going to the vote of approval. And if you just kind of slide across to column G, we identify in each particular year the assessed valuation of property, and then under column I, we multiply that by eight percent to get a maximum number. And then beginning with fiscal year twenty twenty, which assumes we make our debt service payments, uh, in March and June, we have principal payments, um, we have used all the three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, but then immediately next year, because we just borrowed money, so we're still sitting on cash, immediately next year, we move to seven hundred thousand, then a million, and a million five. Um, not all that is a hundred percent issue, I do want to point out, like last year, under column F, those payments that are due under the installment purchase revenue bonds that were issued to build this building, we have a holdback. So we hold back some of your debt limit in case there's a problem, there's a tax collection problem, there's a, um, a natural disaster, and the people who buy these bonds want to know that there's a fallback plan. And that fallback plan is, we'll have an amount of eight percent debt available to issue and repay back if there's a disruption in the cycle. Okay, so that, that is how we, um, we get to your total debt capacity available. Okay? Um, I'm going to move on to the second section, which will be page eleven, which will now take pretty much the same approach we just did to debt service millage, but we'll apply it to fire protection millage. Okay, so here we have three loans outstanding, and again, I've, I've identified the first loan, uh, the two thousand and ten fire protection bond, general obligation, amount outstanding, two million three forty, average interest rate, three point three eight nine percent, and they're eligible to be refunded beginning April of next year. And as of right now, we would have a savings if we were to issue a new loan to replace that one. And so of course, the next logical question is, is show me the money, how much money are we talking about? So on the next page, we did the same thing as we did with the installment purchase revenue bonds, a lot less complicated transaction into a simple general obligation bond, but just like before, under the blue columns, we identify the principal, the interest, and your total payments, which add up to about two point six million. And if we sold bonds today, we would have new payments under the red columns, which add up to two point, just about two point five million, and then we show the difference. So the net savings after all costs would be about seventy-five thousand dollars, um, to the county. And bottom right, we kind of just get down to the interest rate, you're at three point nine six for the refunded bonds today, you can lower that to two point five percent. Now, on a six-year loan, as of today, we probably would do a little bit better than two point five percent, but I want it to be conservative. Okay? So again, uh, we won't know the exact numbers of savings until we actually go through the process, but that process, uh, would start first of the year to get us prepared for, for that sale, okay, and, and savings loan. So as we look at the bigger picture on fire protection millage, to manage other needs that you may have in the future, uh, we look at your debt on page thirteen as a graphical representation, and you can see that, that we are hovering right at that seven point eight five mill, and we have a little bit of a drop-off that's gonna occur, but hopefully we'll get a little bit more of a drop-off when we refinance these bonds, uh, and millage rates change as well. So as we move forward with the refinancing, if there is a small project that you might want to fund through, for fire protection, we could add it to the financing and it wouldn't cost that much money in terms of the issuance expense. So it's a good time to always refresh and look at any other needs that you may have uh, under fire protection and, and see if there's a small, uh, project that, that, you know, may tie in right with the refinancing. So I just bring that to your attention, that process will unfold as we go through the authorization. On page fourteen, we identify all the math behind the graph, I will skip that page, and then we move to page fifteen. So, uh, page fifteen is the same reports, taking the general ledger and looking at what you're collecting from your fire protection millage to get an understanding of, of growth. And you can see that, um, last year, we were, um, right on top of the prior year number, I know it says one point nine percent, but you gotta kind of look at the number, we're looking at sixty-seven thousand, six sixty-nine versus sixty-six thousand three fifty-seven. So it's really kind of right on top of each other, and if you look at more of a longer term trend, the prior years, you'll see years in which we were stagnant, one point six, four point five, minus two point nine, minus seven point six, so it's, it's really, um, to, from my perspective, it's still kind of a one percent, uh, looking at it annually and just making sure that we have, um, an appropriate view long-term, that if there are any disruptions, we can manage any of those disruptions. But just looking at it, there doesn't seem to be, um, any concern on my end that there's gonna be any disruptions just like the, the debt service millage. If we move on to page sixteen, we move through the same process on how we calculate the millage, the requirement and our target each year. So under column G, if you look, our target is that seven point eight five mill, and then we simply do the math, the debt service payments to the per-mill valuation, we come up with seven point one, and the difference between that is fifty thousand. We may absorb that fifty thousand, and, you know, the difference between a budget versus actual, we may not, may carry forward in terms of your debt service, uh, balance in that fund, and we'll make determinations each year as to what flexibility we may have. But if you add up a few years, you can see that, you know, we roughly have fifty to seventy-five But if you add up a few years, you can see that, you know, we roughly have fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in any particular year. Uh, if we have some savings from the refinancing, you might be able to have a small project that we can fit in within the model. And that's just the mathematical, uh, approach to adding in a new project to the extent there is one, um, for that purpose. Any questions on fire protection? Fire protection billage? Okay. So I'm going to move on to the third component, which is the local option sales tax and the referendum bond that we're issuing. So if you recall, we issued a couple series of bond anticipation notes while the tax went into effect so we could make sure that we knew exactly what the tax would collect before we issued the longer-term bonds. Then in two thousand and eighteen, actually after I presented last year, we went through the physical sale of the general obligation bonds, and we had a great result. We issued twelve point five million of referendum bonds, and we were able to affirm the rating with Standard and Poor's at A, what we call A flat, which there are three categories of A, there's A minus, A flat, A plus. We are right where we want to be at A flat. And bond issue was very successful. If we look at page twenty, the graph, it's very simplistic. We have principal and interest payments in each particular year for a period of eight years throughout the life of the local option sales tax. And these bonds were issued to provide you some money upfront to get some projects started. And then we have some money that's going to be available on an ongoing basis. And I know that's what's most important to everybody, is the money that's available ongoing. So I'm going to skip to page twenty-two. This is a spreadsheet that we track, uh, quite quarterly because that's when sales tax receipts are received by the county. And I'm going to go through this in a little bit more detail than the other pages. Under column A, we have periods one through ninety-six, which should be the full term of the sales tax referendum. Uh, under column B, we have the collection month. And then under column C, we have the date in which you actually receive the money. So the collection month occurs, and about three months later, you receive the money from the state. That's, that's the timing mechanism. Under column D, we have entered in the actual collections for all the periods. Under column A, they have the word actual next to the number. So all the way through period twenty-four, we are using actual numbers. The last period was a quarterly, we divided it out by three. We will wait until we get state's data to get the actual monthly, but that's, it'll add up to the same quarterly repayment that you've actually received. We then take those numbers and we do a twelve-month average, divided by twelve, to come up with a pro forma number for the remainder of the sales tax. We're not using growth in these numbers. So we're not assuming that your sales tax grows at anything other than what you've already collected over the previous twelve months. In some areas, growth is assumed. We don't feel that it's appropriate in this particular case because we're relying on future collections to pay for pay-as-you-go projects. Okay? So what is that? Well, you'll see that the blue columns, columns B through E, represent essentially your revenues coming in. Those are all the sales tax dollars that you have coming into the bucket. And then under columns F through K, you have all the monies that are going out of the bucket to pay for certain items. Column F, G, H, that's the principal amount, interest amount, and, and bid premium received on the bond sale. Those are all expenses related to the general obligation bonds that we have already issued. And then after that, we have under column I, a, what we call your pay-go amount, right? So that stands for pay as you go. So each year, we have to certify that you have enough money in the bucket to cover the next eighteen months of payments. Therefore, you do not have to impose a debt service millage tax for the repayment of general obligation bonds because we'd have general obligation bonds that are outstanding. So we go through this process, and each year, we fine-tune how much money will be available from the bucket to be redirected for pay-as-you-go projects. This upcoming year, our calculation is three hundred fifty thousand. That's up about, it gets about a hundred thousand from what I showed last year. Uh, we've also, um, outperformed our collection estimates from last year. And our annual, if you'll scroll down to the next fiscal year, it's two hundred thousand. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that we fine-tune it so that we just carry forward a, the same amount in each particular fiscal year. So two hundred thousand through that page. We go to page twenty-four, where we get to the end of the sales tax, and we're still pay-as-you-go at two hundred thousand. But then we get to the closeout, right? We sunset the sales tax, we pay off the bonds. Everything gets trued up in that last period. There are residual monies that, that it's just a timing basis of that certification versus bond payments. And you'll have the two hundred thousand, and then you'll have residual four hundred eighty-six thousand. So the total under column I, the total amount over the life of the sales tax today that we project will be available for pay-as-you-go projects is two million, thirty-six thousand. So what I did this year, I didn't do this last year, to make it easier, uh, I put at the bottom right, a summary of estimated funds available for projects because I know that this has been a discussion item. So the Series two thousand seventeen bond anticipation notes, we deposited to the project fund five million, nine ninety-one, two sixty-one. And when we sold bonds two thousand and eighteen, we paid off the bond anticipation notes, and we added to the project fund six million, two sixty-seven, eight ninety-two. And then we have fiscal year nineteen, pay-go funds that we've calculated at three hundred fifty thousand. And then the remaining amounts under column I shows total available for projects right now, fourteen million, two ninety-five. So we can just call it fourteen point three million total. The timing of everything will depend on how these funds come available on the pay-as-you-go. And hopefully this time next year, these numbers improve again. Sales tax came in better than we had expected, we had some growth, and we revised our calculations. So it'll be an ebb and flow process. But our goal is to have this setup, these, the spreadsheet, these colors and these columns so that you can grab last year's booklet on your own, you can look at this year's booklet. Hopefully I'm still alive five years from now, and I'm still in front of you, and you can use the one three years earlier and compare. But our goal is to kind of keep it the same way so things don't change and everyone comes accustomed to what it looks like and how to measure it and comfortable, uh, with the numbers from a planning perspective. Because I know that the onus is on you to plan for the projects. Our, our side is dealing with the issuance of the debt and, and the tracking side, not the, not the project side. So I know that was a lot to absorb, um, and I know this was a key item. Is, are there any questions on this component, number three? Okay? So I'm going to touch on one thing under the fourth bucket, which is, uh, heavy equipment. And I'm going to fast forward to the ground. Oops. Okay. So last year, when I was here, I identified that there was one loan outstanding that had a balloon payment coming due, and it needed to be addressed. And, uh, kudos to your finance department, worked very diligently, and they were able to, uh, refinance that loan and finance some additional equipment as well. And you have a new loan in place, um, a two thousand and nineteen, uh, set of payments with Caterpillar, represents two leases, we just received the information, and so we've layered that in. So what I really wanted to just show within the heavy equipment component is that that balloon payment that was coming due, it has been taken care of, and, and you can see what the new payments are going for. So that's the only update that I have under that component. Now, under the, the hospital revenue bonds, I'm not going to go into detail there. There's been no changes. The bonds are still outstanding. There's still a, uh, a, a millage rate in effect. That millage rate is being levied to make the payments of the bonds at ten point eight mils, and we've had no change there. And then on the water and sewer, uh, we simply track the bonds that are outstanding. And we don't track the coverage ratio or so forth. That's something between you and USDA. But we do, we do include it in this booklet. So if you want to look at, uh, the amount of bonds that are outstanding under water and sewer, uh, feel free to, to do so at your leisure. And I am going to fast forward to page thirteen, now, which is the bottom side. And I want to touch on some of the fourth items. So conclusion and action items. So first of all, if you want to move forward with the refinancing of the two thousand and ten installment purchase revenue bonds, which are callable December of two thousand and twenty, we're going to have to get authorization in place. And we'd like to go ahead and get that out of the way so we can do all the work that's needed to get us to a pretty complex issuance of, of bonds. And I'll leave that to your bond counsel to explain that part of the process. Uh, we'd also like to get approval, uh, for the refinancing of the Series two thousand and ten fire protection general obligation bonds, which will be prepayable April of two thousand and twenty. So we'll want to sell bonds prior to that date, and we'll want to close bonds right around April first, two thousand and twenty, to, to have a, a cohesive merit between the two. And hopefully, uh, if interest rates continue to cooperate, we'll be reporting a, a good savings. Under any authorization, if there's, the savings aren't sufficient within the, the ordinance or authorized document, we don't move forward. So, uh, we, we, we establish those thresholds upfront. So that's the first thing in terms of action items. The second, I just wanted to give an update on, on ratings. Uh, Standard and Poor's, that is the, the primary rating agency that we have been using because they have a slightly higher rating on the county than, than Moody's Investor Service. Uh, we still have the A flat rating, uh, on our general obligation bonds. And the installment purchase revenue bonds, which are, uh, they're not general obligation bonds, they're what we call, uh, non-appropriation debt, they're one notch under that, so they're A minus. So we're still in the A category. That's where we want to be. Um, myself and Ms., Ms. Nelson, we had a conversation, and we had a review with Moody's Investor Service, uh, this year. Once the continuing disclosure information became available, we did that in, in August. And, um, thumbs up, uh, Moody's Investor Service affirmed the A three rating. So we're, we, we maintain that A three rating. They are watching some, some items on the general fund. I know there's some decisions that council's making. But we affirmed the, uh, the A three rating, and, and we advised them that, you know, we were, uh, taking on necessary steps to, to keep that A three rating. Now, last year, the question was, why do we have a Moody's rating if they're one notch under Standard and Poor's? And it's a historical thing. If you have some bonds that were issued a while back that have the Moody's rating, uh, so they maintain the Moody's rating, and they have to go through a surveillance process each year. Um, going forward, we will continue to use Standard and Poor's, and we will not use Moody's. So eventually Moody's may fall off, but I, I've seen a lot of different things happen. Who knows? Moody's may upgrade you, and Standard and Poor's may do the opposite, you just never know. So, uh, I, you know, we have to manage both of them at this time. But Standard and Poor's is the, the rating agency that we're working most closely with in terms of new debt issuance. So before I turn it over to Ms. Heiser, just touch on what approval, um, items would be under the, the two refinancings. Are there any questions for me? I think I did better than an hour and fifteen minutes from last year.
Hey, members of the board, uh, members of council, it's great to be here with y'all tonight. And the good news is, and I'm not going to take even fifteen minutes. If y'all have any questions, excuse me, uh, about the legal aspect of any of the debt that, that Brian talked about, I can answer those questions. You know, we've worked closely with the county for a number of years, and with the county attorney. And, and so, um, the, um, from the legal side, all the debt, everything is, is, um, where it should be. And legally, I, I think there's nothing really to make a report on as far as existing debt. For the refundings that Brian talked about, the, um, the installment purchase revenue bond will be a fairly complex transaction. That debt was actually issued on behalf of the county by a corporation. And so we'll have to work with both the county and the corporation to get all the, all of the approvals in place. And, um, since the debt can't actually be paid off until next December, so we can't call the debt until December, uh, we have really a year to start that process. So at y'all's convenience, early next year, we could start the, the process of having an ordinance with three readings and a public hearing. The same is true for the fire debt. Uh, as Brian mentioned, that would be a much, um, less complex transaction. It will probably end up being bid to a local bank. Y'all do have both First Citizens and BBNT, uh, file y'all very closely and are very interested in your debt. So I would see that debt being placed with, with a local bank. And it, that authorization would also be three readings of an ordinance and a public hearing. And we, uh, since that's in April, we might want to, uh, we tell us permission to go ahead and start that in January. And that should be perfect timing to be able to, uh, uh, prepay the, have the debt paid off and get the lower interest rate as early as possible.
Any questions for council? Hearing that, thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next order of business is that I'm sure you all have received, um, paperwork from Mr. Ainsley to discuss how we would, the proper process as far as parliamentary procedures that we would follow in reference to actually taking a ordinance off the table. So at this point, you want to say anything, Ms. Miller, or you just want us to go, go ahead and take that? You want to? You want to?
As far as the public can see.
Right.
Yeah. Um, I sent, I sent the council a memo. If, in fact, we'd like a third reading of the ordinance. Has, I sent you the revised version of it. Any member of council may make a motion to take from the table ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash ten, which was laid on the table at third reading in our last reading on October seventeenth. That would be the first motion. Then, after that motion, if that passes, then automatically you would go into a vote on the third reading. Second is not necessary because the table motion itself constitutes a second on the parliamentary procedure. Any questions about that process? First, there must be a motion taken from the table, ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash ten, which was laid on the table at third reading in your last meeting on October seventeenth.
And you just say any member of council can do that.
Any member of council on this particular one?
We need a motion to take from the table, ordinance number two zero one nine dash one zero, which was laid on the table, the, at third reading in our last reading, uh, October seventeenth. We need a second?
Second.
All those in favor of taking, uh, taking off the table, ordinance number two zero one nine dash one zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same? Calling a vote for third reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash one zero. Ordinance to amend wins for accounting budget ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero five, to provide adjustments in the budget to reduce expenses and to account for a fee recompensation payment, all of which is to pay deficits anticipated to be nine hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. We don't need that one. We only need to vote for it. All those in favor of third reading and ordinance number two zero one nine dash one zero, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same? Motion is, it is carried. Next order of business is third reading and adoption of ordinance number two zero one nine dash eleven, an ordinance providing for the transfer of authority for conducting municipal elections in this town, especially to Williamsburg County Board of Representatives and Election Commission. We need a motion. All those in favor, or any discussion? Hearing aye, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same. Opposer is the same. The motion is carried. We're moving to resolution number 2019-16, it's a resolution authorized by the Williamsburg County to enter into a third amended franchise agreement with the town of Brudieville for the expansion and franchise area as specified in the third amendment franchise agreement. This is the water project in the McDonald County. All those in favor, approve of resolution number 2019. Sorry, I've been going a little too fast. Any discussion?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same. It's the orders. We've already gone through our resolution 2019-7, we're moving on to next business, which is the proclamation. It's in recognition to Mark Dines, Williamsburg County proclaims November 17th as well as the month of November as premature awareness day. Does that represented it here? Is Selena Sisam? She's not. Okay. We'll move down to the next order of business, which is supervisory report. At this time, I will ask Chief Garcia, please come to the floor.
I'm presenting to you this month's Department of the Month as well as Employee of the Month. The Department of the Month for Winsburg, for Winsburg County, excuse me, is the manager's office. This office is a key part for the criminal justice system in Winsburg County, which led by Mr. Laurence Williams, who gave many years of her services to help law enforcement as well as the citizens of Winsburg County. This office prides themselves on being professional, but is always ready to assist and serve our citizens. At this time, I don't think any of the representative or either a clerk is here to accept their award at this time. And they want to give their apologies, they had prior engagements that happened to fall on tonight, so.
Leave off the freezer, go into the ice box.
Anybody else? And one more? Thank you.
Just give a massive round of applause. Yes, sir. All you and that. Yes, sir. All right, we have one more. As well for the month of November, we have our Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month is none other than our Mr. Ricky Scott from Winsburg County Public Works Department. Of course, for the past eight months, Mr. Scott has shown dedication and commitment to helping public works get on the right track, where most people would be a little resistant to the change. He has embraced it and opened it with open arms and has decided to, he wants to make sure that the culture of public work changed. Mr. Ricky possesses a lot of great talent and definitely expertise in his ability of doing what he's doing in this field. And his fields include solid waste along with roads and bridges. Not a stranger to hard work, Mr. Ricky also fills in from time to time as a duck truck driver as well as a roll-off driver, so he's a jack-of-all-trades, definitely. So this is an award that is well-deserved and let's give him a round of applause, Mr. Ricky Scott. Thank you. Every time you call him at the end of the day, Ricky, how's everything going? I tell you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Brian.
One little quick briefing I needed to let members of council know because of the fact that we had some, some citizens call us in reference to an ARMAT grant that we received back in 2018. ARMAT basically stands for Rural, the Rural Micro Entrepreneur Assistance Program. It was a program designed to help small businesses with startup costs and things like that. It was a number of people that put in for it, took the class, and did not receive the funding source, largely because in 2018, we had 60 days to loan on the money and we were not successful in doing that. So, and we also had a grant violation of hiring a family member for the technical assistance. So at this point, we are in the fight to try to keep this grant, but I'm not for certain that we're gonna be successful. The grant was, the total grant was $500,000 to help out those small businesses, but at this point, I'm not for certain, but those citizens who did take the class, they will receive a refund in their money because they did have to pay a small fee for that. But until the program is basically temporarily suspended until further notice. I just wanna brief you on that. If no one else has anything else to say, I'm seeking motion for adjournment. If there's a second, all those in favor for adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Opposer is the same. I have it. Y'all have a good night.